We have the School Board of Independent School District 624. I asked the clerk to please call the roll.
Daniels.
Here.
Ellison.
Here.
New Master.
Here.
Arcan, here.
All right, thank you very much. And well, before we move into our first discussion item, Dr. Kaczmarek.
All right. So MSBA moved School Board Appreciation Month to September, used to be February. So our Vershi bars are going to now.
It's like my favorite school board meeting of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There you go. Thanks for all you do.
This is going to grow my backpack in about five months, I'm going to find it. Excited to have a candidate.
Ingredients thoughtful, accountable, open, representative voice, goodwill, conscientious, physically responsible, supportive, and proud. So thanks for all you do. And yeah, I guess September is the month now. So going forward, I guess they changed it going forward.
Thank you very much. I am really proud to serve on this school board of this district, but especially with the members that I'm serving with. You're all just really thoughtful people. So, thank you.
It's a nice crew.
Yes. Thank you very much. I'm going to eat this as soon as the meeting is over.
These were manufactured by White Bear Lake Area Schools. It says so on the.
It says so. Must be true. Thank you. Thank you all very much. It's really a gift to be able to serve here. And with that, we will move into our first discussion item, B1, Early Childhood Updates. Dr. Gillespie, we have a whole crew of folks.
I'm going to take the lead on this one.
All right, so Mr. Maurer, if you could.
Enjoy all the information that's coming your way.
Wonderful. Thank you. Mr. Maurer?
Thanks for, well, happy to be here. Good to see you Chair Ellison, members of the board. It is my pleasure to introduce, Angela Drange cannot make it tonight, but it's my pleasure to introduce Kristin Nelson, who was hired as our new Assistant Director of Early Childhood Programs over the summer. So we're three weeks into the school year this year with our little ones. So we have a presentation tonight that she will be taking us through in regards to her early childhood overview, as well as some updates of what's currently happening. So Kristin, you head the floor.
Thanks. Hello, I'm Chair Ellison and School Board members. Thanks for letting me come and talk about early childhood and the littlest of the little bears. I'm super excited to share what I know so far, as I've kind of gotten into the role and been able to be with kids. It's the best part from the staff. So on the first slide here, we have, you know, what does early childhood look like in White Bear Lake? And it was just kind of a little overview to show the two programs. We have the Special Ed Program and Community Education, but it really shows kind of how we work together. And so on the special education side, you see in the early childhood world, there's birth to two, ECSE, ECSE Child Find. And then on the community ed side, in the early childhood world, there's preschool. We have ECFE and screening. And then there's also outreach and home visit. And you'll find even we work together on that as well as we roll. So next slide. For screening, where's, last year we screened about 591 low preschoolers that came through through us, and they do need to be screened before they come to preschool. So we make sure that happens. But I think, as you can see on the screen there, we have our T-shirts. And we've been able to get back to sending those T-shirts back out to our families when they are ready to come to us and be screened. And so they are going, I am expecting them to come in wearing them because they're pretty proud of their T-shirts when they come in. I've seen some of the kids come to school in them already. And so that is a really important part of being able to make our families feel welcome, as well as make sure we're touching base with all of our families in screening where that's the first contact to the district. And so we take that very seriously, I take that very seriously, to be able to make sure that they're feeling welcomed and that they have a really good experience to be able to continue on with us. The next overview is about Early Childhood Family Ed. That is the program, of course, where families sign up and they come with their students and their children to classes with us. We currently have 141 enrolled, and I think that's probably gone up in the last couple of weeks. As school starts, they go, oh, I should come to preschool, or I should come to ECFE. And they give us a call and sign up right away. So we are working on that. I've been down to that classroom a few times, so there's lots of activity going on. We also have a full family literacy program. So we have two sections there that are full. And parents do the same type of a day with their kids. They come twice a week. And they do come in and do activities with their children in the classroom, and then they're able to go after that and do some adult basic ed coursework. And so they've been working really hard on that. I know they were testing today, so. Let's see, next is pre-K, next slide. Thank you. And so our early childhood programs, we do, we have the full day options that we've been filling up rather, filling up quickly and are full in many of those. We have our Co-Tat, half-day preschool programs over at Normandy and Onika. And then our full day models do have access to wraparound care and transportation. Currently, we have 297 low preschoolers coming, 359 ECSE students, and that's birth to five. We do still have families registering, calling us every day. And our full day options right now are Monday through Friday, full day options are full. And so we are working on those waitlists as we speak. And then we have Tamara, of course, which is our outdoor program. That is new to me, and I'm really enjoying being out there and seeing how they're working together with the naturalists to provide a really engaging environment for our students. And we did start an all-day program, a Monday, Wednesday, Friday all-day program there. And so that, of course, is also filled up. So they're having some wonderful experiences there. I think, yep, Early Childhood Special Ed. We have our programming with Early Childhood Special Ed and our students with our children with exceptional needs. And they're seen in a different variety of environments. It could be anything from home or childcare, integrated into classrooms or playgroups, and certainly preschool is an option. You know, I think that being able to collaborate with Early Childhood Special Ed and our programming, it just provides the best opportunities for all children and providing each child what they need. So I think that's a huge asset to what we have here at White Bear Lake, is being able to provide those services together. And so.
I want to take, Lisa, I forgot to introduce you. Lisa Orin, our Director of Student Support Services, is here, in case there are any questions that come up around the ECSE side in Angela's absence. Lisa's department oversees that area of early childhood. Next one.
Yeah. So one of the topics that we picked to talk about was our action plan and that strategic emergence of our action plan. And so on the slides are the three tactics that we determined, and then the three specific results that go with each of those. And it's just kind of an overview of what our action plan is focusing on, and that will be engaging diverse learners, increasing access to early childhood programs, and fostering family and community engagement. And so the next few slides are just a quick overview of kind of how we're working on that so far. So engaging our diverse learners. This fall, when I joined, the team had a really amazing training planned for our staff. And so they were able to have a presenter come in and provide training on engaging with young multich children, multilingual children and their families. And so we did that in August, and staff were super engaged, and you can see already some of the things that they're trying in their classrooms. And then we're having this team come back in January, and they're going to dive into language-focused planning, so that we can really take a look at how we're, you know, putting those practices in place into both our TSG, into our assessments, and into our curriculum, and making sure that we're providing those opportunities. The next one is that we're going to increase access to early childhood. And so we're super excited. As you can see, we've got some interest, some fun things coming up too. So we have, we're working on providing an additional class for our Monday through Friday all-day kiddos. And so we're in the process, right now we have some interviews this week for a teacher, so this would be awesome. We're hoping that one of these teachers works out, so we can start right away sometime in October to get those kiddos on the waiting list in. We also experienced a large number of threes enrolling this year. And so we are also in the process of adding an additional threes class, and that would be in collaboration with Early Childhood Special Ed, to be able to have some more threes come into Normandy Park. So I think we've got a teacher lined up for that. It's just getting those next pieces in place. And then certainly, we're super excited with the transition into new spaces when construction is done and making some of those plans, creating some opportunities up north. I was up there with Tim just yesterday. So being able to kind of take a look at what kinds of things we're able to provide, and having some discussion with our Early Childhood Family Ed staff too, about what things we maybe could start already this school year and provide some opportunities for families to try out, try out some open gyms or different things like that up there. For outreach, we do some home visiting. We have some ECFE family events. And then we do have our Child and Family Advocate. And that, I'm learning, she is critical to who we are and what we do. And she really has this, the goal is to connect families to community resources and enrich their school experience. And I have seen it almost every day, how she's really connecting with families and being able to provide those resources that they need and making families, you know, feel connected. Next slide. And there's some of our foster family and community engagement. Those are some of the things that we have coming up. So we're having a field trip to Pine Haven and opening that up to all families in the community and trying to find ways. Some are going to be able to do the busing, and some are going to join us there as they come in. But with the engagement, the engagement dollars that we received, we're having an apple adventure on Wednesday. And so we have families coming in at three different times, at the beginning of their class or at the beginning of their class, whichever one works best for them. But there'll be some activities, and then I believe we're having some donuts that are apple-themed as well. So there'll be lots of time for families to kind of come in to Normandy and see what their, what their children are doing in their classrooms and kind of engage with some of the staff as well. So we're looking forward to that. And that's the presentation, so thank you so very much, and we're super excited for the school year.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Any questions for you and the board? Dr. Arcan.
I don't have a question as much as I just have a thank you. The ECFE is so crucial, because especially when you're a young parent, not only starting on that child's journey of learning, but sometimes as a parent, we're starting off on that journey, networking and learning. And so both the parent and the child get to start on that pathway, and it really helps them in the networking. I also like the fact that when we do the three-year-old screening, the earlier we can do it, the greater the chance that there's a gap. We can fill that gap, so they start kindergarten, ready to go without any deficits, and that's important. And it's just the opportunity that we provided in our programs, the students start loving to learn and want to be here, and it just sets them off on the right path for their academic journey through our system. So thank you for everything you do with that.
Thank you. Chris Daniels.
Question. For the waitlist, do you know how many students that might be? Are there, and there probably is a difference between threes and fours?
Yeah, most, the waitlist in four-year-old programming, we're right at around 10, 12? Yeah, so.
If we get that teacher.
If we get the teacher.
Cover that waitlist.
Absolutely.
On that.
Yep, we have a space ready to go at Birch Lake Elementary. It will expand our SR, our School Readiness Plus seats over there. So we've been working with Julian on that, so that's prepped and ready to go. So as soon as we get a teacher lined up, get time to get them hired and get acclimated, we hope to, in a perfect world, we're off and running in notification of the families of classes starting right around MEA.
Oh, that's great. One other question. When we talked about wraparound services, is that the family advocate then? Is that the same, is that family advocate the person that does the wraparound? Were you talking about wraparound?
That, and the fact that we have extended days, so that they're able to come. If they come on the bus, but they don't have any, they don't have anyone yet to pick them up at home at the end of the day, then we can hop over to extended day, and they, we have services provided there for them as well.
That wraparound for childcare with extended days available to preschoolers that attend preschool sections at our elementary schools.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much for all of your work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move into our second discussion item, B2, Transition Education Center Update. And Dr. Gillespie, Ms. Orin.
Good evening, members of the school board. It's my privilege to introduce Sarah Derby this evening. She's going to be talking about the Transition Education Center and the programs that she has there. She's the Assistant Director of Student Support Services, as well as the Principal at the Transition Education Center. Welcome, Sarah.
Good evening, everyone. All right, to start, we have moved this fall into what was formerly Hugo Elementary School. We will be there for a couple of years until we transition into Sunrise Park. It has really been a great location. It's a beautiful site up there. But in addition to just larger classrooms, the staff have really loved having the designated cafeteria space, the gym space, and the outdoor space, which we will also have at Sunrise Park. But that's been really nice. In my 12 years here, we've never had a cafeteria, and it's just another really nice time for socialization and for students to really get together on their own. So I always like to do a little review of the four unique programs at the Transition Education Center, because people aren't always familiar with them. But we have the Transition Plus Program, which is typically for our 18- to 22-year-olds that are working on education, post-secondary education, employment, and independent living skills. And then we have the TAP Program, which stands for Transition and Post-Secondary Preparation Program. And this is for students in grades nine through age 22. And these students have been referred to the TAP Program due to their social-emotional needs. Then we have Project Search, which is a program that's for students in their last year of transition programming. And this is located at Gillette Children's Specialty Healthcare. And this is a school-to-work program, and our students are interns at Gillette Hospital for that last year of school. And then we have the AWARE Program, which stands for Accountability with Academics and Restorative Education. And that's for students in grades six through 12. And that's a program that provides education for students that are serving a suspension. New this year, which I just kind of wanted to note and highlight, is that eligibility in Minnesota now provides services to students until age 22 for students that are on an IEP. So previously, students could go through their 21st school year. Now students graduate a day prior to their 22nd birthday, they age out. So students can obviously graduate sooner than that if they've met their goals, but if there are students that are with us through the end of their schooling career, it'd be one day prior to their 22nd birthday, would be their end date. So this is our tech mission. Oops. I told you I'd be fast. I've never talked so slowly.
Do you want to steal this? Do you want to talk for your initiative?
Yes. So our mission, which I wasn't going to read, but I highlighted some of it in orange, which was honoring students' unique abilities and aspirations, ensure that students achieve their individual goals and transition successfully into their larger community, and student-centered planning approaches to encourage independence. I put those in orange because our staff was trying to think of a way that we could maybe summarize or be more succinct in explaining our mission, so students and families and even themselves could remember it a little more easily. So we came up with that T E C, and our staff submitted a number of different options. And our student leadership team voted, and they voted on, the T is transitioning to community, E is encouraging independence, and C is celebrating aspirations. So that was just a little way to help us all remember it. We've T-shirts, we've been doing some marketing and some posters in our hallways with that. The next one, I'll just keep talking, is our Strategic Plan Tactics, and we have two of them. The first one is that we will embed personalized post-secondary planning opportunities into our programming in our students' final year. And this was something that our Strategic Plan Team developed, a measurable post-secondary goal check-in and a checklist. And before students graduate, they have to identify three goals, maybe where they want to live, where they want to work, if they want to go on to school, or go on to the military, whatever that might be. And we don't want there to be a gap in, once they graduate, now they have to start doing all of that planning. So prior to them reaching their 22nd birthday or aging out, we want to be meeting with them four to six months prior to that time, to make sure that they've taken the ASVAB, or that they've toured a day program, or that they've enrolled in a school, and they've started to look at some of those next steps in their plan. And then the other tactic is, is we will understand our students and their needs to ensure belonging. And we have three main initiatives under that bullet. The first one is implementing restorative circles. And during our advisory class, we've embedded restorative circles into our class, and it's really a way to help create safe, respectable spaces where they can come together and talk about different topics and really strengthen relationships. So each of our staff members was assigned a different topic, and they've created them for all of the different classrooms. And some of the topics that we've done for restorative circles are like why friendships are important, dealing with stress, understanding your strengths, feeling respected. The second bullet under that tactic was positive feedback tracking, and we have found that our students really like a tangible feedback. They really like it if you cut out a little butterfly die-cut and write a specific little note to them, something that they can take home. So in addition to just giving them verbal feedback, we track to make sure all of our students are receiving some sort of a tangible feedback throughout the school year to take home, which has been great. And then the last bullet is our student climate survey, which I'm going to highlight on the next slide. Oh, you have it? Okay, good. Yeah. I'm like, this will feel a little weird. All right. So this, again, our survey was developed by our Strategic Planning Team. It was really helpful, especially to have a parent on our team who could really help us with the wording and make sure that their students would understand the language and what we were asking of them. So we had different categories that we created, and all of our students in all of the programs took the survey. And as you can see here, about 90% of our students marked yes, or sometimes that they liked school, and about 90% marked yes, or sometimes that they feel safe at school. And on the next slide, it gets a little bit more into the four different categories of the questions. The first one was really around safe environment. And again, you can kind of see, we're looking for a lot of blues and reds in our responses. And the second one is feeling valued, celebrated, included, and understood. And again, about 80% of our students were feeling that they were feeling celebrated and understood in our building. And then on the next slide, it was our third category, which was kind of under student agency. And about 90% of our students marked yes, or sometimes to the student agency questions. We did find that, again, our students don't always feel like they know what their IEP goals are, so that's something that we're continuing to work on, that they really know what areas that they're working on. Our teachers meet with them, and they present a PowerPoint that they present at their own IEP meetings, to help them better understand their disability, their goals, and maybe the accommodations that work best for them, because we want them to be able to self-advocate and be that student agency. Most of our students do have self-advocacy as an area in which they are working on, so we'll continue to work on that as well. And then the student climate survey data one, we did ask, this was under our fourth category, which was access to supportive adults. And we had a picture of each staff member along with their name, and we asked, these staff really care about me? And 100% of our students were able to identify at least one staff member. Some people identified every staff member, which made us feel really good. But ultimately, I really want to commend the tech staff just for their ability to build relationships with our students and make our students feel welcome and safe there. And then, I didn't put a slide in this one, but I just was going to highlight quickly. We had three open-ended questions as well for our students, and one of them was, what was the best thing about school? And some of our most popular answers were reading, Spanish Club, positive engagement class, my friends, and staff. What would make school better was our second question. And we had more color in our classrooms, burgers, not cheeseburgers, more time with friends, if Taylor Swift would come to town, a later start date, time, and more points of pride prizes. And then what would make you feel most celebrated at school? And this was very heavily birthday-related. Treats for my birthdays, cupcakes for my birthday, DJ on my birthday, small things, and having friends. So that was kind of fun for me to read those. The next one was just a picture of our students in our new cafeteria. Again, it's just fun to see them in the cafeteria. The next slide, thanks Lisa, I was ever moving it forward now, is a list of our course offerings. And again, I felt like our student climate data really showed positive results and feedback, and I think that's a direct relationship to the variety of courses and the number of courses that we offer our students. We have many of our students for four years, but we have had some students for eight years in our program. So we really have to offer a variety of classes. We don't offer all of these classes every year, but we do always try to offer an independent living class, cooking class, obviously, reading and math kind of classes are offered every year. But some of them, we call them more like electives, and we don't offer every year, but they can have a variety of courses while they're with us. The next one was a little bit about Project Search. Again, this is an option for students in their last year of transition programming. If they're accepted to Project Search, there's an interview and a skills day application that they have to go through. But if they're accepted, then they are, they work in three different departments at Gillette while they are there. This is our eighth school year of Project Search. We've had 41 interns complete the program, with seven more there currently. And we've had 80 to 100% of our interns have achieved competitive outcomes after graduation, except during COVID, slipped down to 70 a little bit. But competitive employment means working at minimum of 16 hours a week at minimum wage or higher in an integrated setting. So we've been really proud of the outcomes. And seven of our interns have been hired at Gillette, either full-time, part-time, or seasonally, after they've left the program. And they're currently working in the departments that I have listed there. So it's really fun. Right now, we have one of our students from last year who's training our current interns this year. So. The next slide is just a list of the departments at Gillette that have hosted a Project Search intern. We currently have students in supply chain, human resources, health and information management, environmental services, and patient engagement. And one of the things we got back this year that we haven't had since prior to COVID is some of the locations, the Lifetime Clinic, some of them are across the highway or in different locations, not at the Gillette site. And previously, our students would take a shuttle, a Gillette shuttle, that doesn't run anymore. So now our students are taking public transportation to those sites. So that's a really good skill that our students are learning midday to practice that public transportation. So that's that one. The next one is just some examples of the job tasks that our interns might be asked to perform. Again, I'm not going to read through those, but you can see there's a variety of clerical, kind of housekeeping, lots of organizational type of tasks that they're asked to do in the different departments. Next is the AWARE data. And here, this is from last year, just kind of a summary of last year. And the data shows, again, that the majority of our students that attend the AWARE program only attend one time. Of course, we have students of all genders and of all grade levels, secondary buildings that attend, and the majority of our students that are referred to AWARE come one, two, or three days. Finally, we have three building goals that we've identified. The first one is to increase the attendance rate of our students in our TAP program. Again, those are our students that have more of those social, emotional, mental health needs. So where we are working on, you know, kind of identifying those problems, the barriers of why they're not getting to school, we are offering more flexible scheduling. Some of our students don't come every day, some of them, we have done some online things when their mental health is really the barrier to getting them there. So we're trying to offer different things to get those students their diploma and get graduated. The second one is related to the DESA pre-assessment, and our students that are identified as needs instruction. And again, those are those social-emotional skills that they're working on. And our psychologist and our social worker in our building, she does large groups, small group, and individual groups to support that. But we also have speakers that come in and the co-located mental health supports, as well as having outside providers of the students' choice coming in to help provide some of those supports. And the last one is really just that increased family engagement and those after-school sponsored events. We haven't done a lot of those in the last 11 years. We haven't really had the space to do that. So we have, we're trying to do more of that. We had a really great turnout at Open House. We had 67 students and families show up for our Open House, and we had our first family engagement night on September 19th, and we had 50 people show up that night as well. And we are going to have at least two more family engagement nights this year. So I just wanted to highlight family engagement a little bit. So this is our students at family engagement night this week. We invited all of their siblings. We had aunties and uncles, we had grandmas and grandpas. They asked who could come, and we said, anybody. And we had activities for all ages, but we really focused on. And we had activities for all ages, but we really focused on, we did review our family engagement plan and our equity commitment in the district. And then our students colored pots and then we planted succulents. And of course, we did some, you know, eating and things like that. So here, you can see the pots that they've designed and kind of some of their final products that they, that they had done. So that's it.
Wonderful. Thank you. Any questions for Derby? Dr. Arcand?
I was curious because I know we went, was it 21? You turned 21, but you got to finish the year?
Yes.
Now, 22, you're done.
Yes.
Have you seen the impact in enrollment or how's it fluctuating?
We've definitely seen an impact on the enrollment. But we also are having really, you know, like last year, we had students who would have been grad, would have turned 22 in September and October. And again, that's where that measurable post-secondary goals, like what are their goals afterwards? And some of our students with more significant disabilities, especially, there's waiting lists to get into day programs and different things. So you don't want that, we, we really want to have conversations with those families that it might make the most sense to transition into those into September and not coming back a month or two. So we have definitely seen, we had our smallest graduating class last year that we've had in a number of years and that's because so many more were returning this, this year.
Thank you.
Ms. Daniels?
I just wanted to comment that I was able to attend the family engagement night last week and it was just fabulous. And I want to just say the staff in your program knows, cares about, loves each of those kids and their families. And just, it was just really great to see. And they were so proud to bring their families and introducing to staff. And then what was really great too was that the families were talking to each other, introducing to each other, some of the parents. And that was really great too because for those families, I think, for every family it's really important to engage, family engagement. It was evident. And so thank you for that. And it was just really fun.
Kathleen got thrown my credit card and I said, go buy more pizzas. And away she went. And it's been great because we're using ParentSquare now and that was really helpful for the outreach to our families for family engagement and their different languages and getting that information. And our families told, really told us that. So that was really helpful as well. So, yeah.
I just want to commend you. I was really struck by, in the student survey, how highly the staff are viewed by the students. I mean, because relationships are everything in education. And the fact that so many students said that they know the staff wants them to be successful and listen to them and care about their feelings is really incredible. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both very much.
And then we'll move into our only operational item, C1, action on the certification for 2024 payable 2025 preliminary property tax levy. Mr. Walden, Ms. Johnson?
Thank you, Chair Ellison, members of the board. Dr. Kazmitchak. Each year in September, our staff works with MDE, the levy certification staff, to prepare the tax levy for the upcoming calendar year. There's two dates we need to hit. September 30th is when the proposed levy needs to be certified and December 28th is when the final levy needs to be certified. So we're at the first step in that process, which is certification of the proposed tax levy for 2025. Our team, and when I say our, I mean Andy, works with, with the team at MDE to make sure that we've submitted our data, that it's checked and double-checked multiple times and many runs occurred before we get to a point where we're at tonight. So Andy's done great work on this. I'll turn it over to our Director of Finance, Andy Johnson, to walk us through it.
Okay, well, as Tim said, we're at the stage in our budgeting cycle that we are at the preliminary property tax levy. There are three main components to our property tax levy. The general fund, our community services fund, and then our debt service fund. Our debt service fund again is kind of like our mortgage fund, how we pay for all of the improvements that have happened across the school district. The property tax levy is quite complex. The document itself is 39 pages and there's three columns. All of those calculations are set by statute. And then there's estimates that we provide, there's estimates that the county provide and that MDE provides. And so as Tim said, we come through it, we refine it as we find errors or adjustments that have to be made. And so included in your packet is the estimates based on the latest and greatest today's copy that is presented from MDE. We just stressed that this is preliminary at this time. And so each year in September, we come to you and we ask that the school board approve the maximum. And that allows us to continue to refine as we find anything that needs to be refined or replaced. And then it also allows the county and MDE to make any changes that they may come across. Also included in the packet is the estimated change that would occur to the average home or commercial, industrial or apartment buildings. So then with that, then the recommended action would be that the school board approve the maximum for the 24 payable 25 proposed preliminary property tax levy.
Hold on one second.
Were you all able to find the document in the packet? It's at the end. Yep.
It's not in my tabs. Sorry. Too many tabs. Okay. So the, the recommended action is to approve the maximum for the 2024 payable 2025 proposed preliminary property tax levy. Could I get a motion to approve? A motion by Dr. Neumaster and a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Daniels. Any questions or discussion? Dr. Arcand?
I just have a question for this tax levy. What percent of that is actually funding the district? I mean, that doesn't pay for everything, does it?
Oh, no. The, in the total, like for the general fund, do you mean?
Yeah, we're looking at all our expenses and the revenue we're taking in. What, about what percent is that?
For the total on the general fund, off the top of my head, like 5% maybe? I would, I'd want to double check.
So a majority of it comes from the state?
Yeah, the vast majority of our, of our general fund revenue comes from the state. Yeah.
Typically about, there's a range. Typically it's about a 23. Typically it's like a quarter.
I may be thinking of just specifically the operating.
Yeah.
The referendum.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So by the whole category, it's probably in the neighborhood of 20 to 25%.
Yes, it's not, it's not a major amount of revenue we take in. But I mean, it's not the total.
It's not the total.
Yep.
Other questions? All right. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Daniels.
So, so this is our preliminary. And so when, when it adjusts and it will and it'll change, then we vote on this again, right?
Yes.
And we approve it again. So we're just approving this preliminary.
Correct. Yep, you're approving the maximum just so that we are able to continue to refine it and that MDE can make those changes as they come through. And then in December, we have the truth in taxation hearing. You remember, that's when we have the big graphs and all of those changes are incorporated at that point. And then you reprove actual dollar amounts. Yep, by fund. And that's then what goes out to the taxpayers. Yes.
So the reason you don't approve a dollar amount tonight is because there's always, there's almost always changes to it. And if you approved a dollar amount tonight, you wouldn't be able to change that amount. You'd have, you'd be stuck with that amount. And so as, you know, there might be adjustments to enrollment, there might be adjust, you know, there might be prior year adjustments that the Department of Ed catches up on, that then changes the levy. And so, so school districts do the, they do what we're doing tonight. They approve maximum and then the, over the next couple of months, everything gets refined and we bring it in December and that's when you get the dollar amounts. They usually don't vary a whole lot from what you see at this meeting, but sometimes they do, depending on what, either we, we find or correct or correct or add or whatever the Department of Ed does.
Other things that could happen is there might be like a statewide appropriation or a maximum that, you know, if one district had a big error, that might throw off a calculation statewide. So that's another reason that we like to just have the maximum and allows those types of fluctuations to happen.
The county could change some data that impacts our calculations. Lots can happen between now and that final levy certification.
And we're in three different counties.
Correct.
So that's three different counties we're talking about too. Yeah. I feel like there's nothing on earth more complicated than school district finance.
Yeah, I mean, there's rocket science.
All right. Any further questions or discussion? This will require a roll call vote. I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Daniels?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Neumaster?